... which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Before the meeting starts, I would just like to announce that I hired a new interim DPW superintendent. His name is Doug Novak, and he started on Monday. And I would like to announce also that the community is invited to participate in the annual holiday shop and stroll tomorrow, which actually is a lot of fun, and I enjoy participating in it. So if you have a chance, get out there. Whoever's watching us on Fair TV, get out there. It's a lot of fun to shop our local businesses and pick up some holiday gifts. And this Friday is the tree lighting at 7:00 at the Town Green, so I hope people will join us for that. I'll get to light the tree this year, which is kind of fun. And so I will call the meeting to order, and I am going to first ask that we approve two separate sets of minutes. Going to ask us to approve the, make a motion to approve the minutes from Wednesday, November 20th, 2019.
I'll make the motion.
And I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And may I ask for a motion to approve the minutes from the executive session Monday, meeting on Monday, November 25th?
I'll make the motion.
And I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Okay. This is my first meeting, so bear with me.
Doing well so far.
Well, thank you.
Well done.
Thank you. Woo-hoo. Okay. So I want to move some items off the agenda to a date certain, and I will read those now. Starting with item number six. Six A. And six B. No, not B. Six A and six A double I, I think it is?
C2, perhaps.
And then C1 is going to be moved off. And D. And G. H. I. And J will all be moved to the next Board of Select meeting on December 18th. Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion for purposes of discussion as well.
And I will second it.
Question, why are we moving these items? Just so that...
Well, we didn't, obviously, it's our first meeting, so we were doing a lot of work to put this together. And because we got it together so late yesterday, not all members had an opportunity to read the resumes, and if they wanted to have the opportunity to call some of the newer people who haven't been in, on any of these positions, would have that opportunity.
Okay. And can I just clarify? So it's, the ones we're moving is under number six. We're moving A. We're moving C number I, or C letter I.
A1 and A2.
We're moving A2 as well?
Yes.
Okay. We're C, we're moving C number 1.
Correct.
We're moving D in its entirety.
Correct.
G in its entirety.
Correct.
H in its entirety.
Mm-hmm.
I in its entirety. J in its entirety as well?
Correct.
Okay.
I'd also like to comment and just say thank you to Madam for Select Woman. That is never going to grow old, by the way. And just say thank you for your thoughtful approach in this, and I really appreciate having the time for all of us to be able to talk to the potential candidates. It bodes really well for our process and for your willingness to work collaboratively, and I'm just really appreciative. So thank you very much.
I appreciate that, and I apologize. It was our first agenda, and frankly, it was a lot of work to put it together, and so it took us a bit more time than I had thought it would. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Ready?
Yeah.
Want to make a motion, or...
I'll make a motion that we vote on these, moving this to date certain being the December 18th meeting.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome. All right. Get back to the agenda. So we're going to hear reappointments, and so number four, to hear and consider an act upon the following reappointments. A, Affordable Housing Committee, Stephen Graffal, who I have worked with for a number of years as a ranking member on the Housing Committee in the Legislature, and even prior to that, he has served on this, on this committee well. He's very knowledgeable on affordable housing issues. He brings a wealth of information and experience, and is very helpful, I think, in moving us to a place that we need to be. And I actually think it's going to be a really important committee going forward, because I would like to be a lot more engaged in it so that we can meet our affordable housing goals. And so I'm looking forward to working with you in the future. And does anyone have any other, would anybody like to ask Mr. Graffal any questions or make any comments?
I would like to say in general, thank you to everybody for your service and for your willingness to step back up to the plate and continue to fulfill the roles that you're already doing for the town.
Would anybody like to speak on this item? Hearing none? I make a motion? Am I allowed to make a motion, or do I have to ask you to make a motion?
Let me ask you a question. Are we motioning for everybody at the same time, or do you want to do them individually?
Oh, that's actually, I think that's a very good idea, so let's go down the list. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, next, we have Flood and Erosion Control Board, Richard Dumtowski. Would anybody like to comment on that? Anything else?
Just to say for public understanding that these are reappointments to existing people who are already serving, and with good reports and with great feedback, and to echo Mr. Flynn, thank everybody for their service and willingness to step up again. But I just wanted to clarify that...
Thank you.
These are reappointments, and so therefore maybe some less discussion than there might be, because there's a track record of success.
Good point. And C, we have Burr Gardens Advisory Committee, where Laura Fasano and Karen Winget would be reappointed. We have Historic District Commission, Adam Cliver, which also will require RTM approval, which will be sent to the RTM. We have Land Acquisition Commission, Tara Holly, a reappointment. Parks and Rec Commission, David Weber, reappointment. Human Services Commission, Laura Inserta. And the Shellfish Commission, Lynette Enhofer. And Solid Waste and Recycling Commission, which also requires RTM approval of Joseph Pagnazzi.
I also understand that there's one more gentleman looking for reappointment on the Burr Gardens Advisory Committee, so I think it was...
Is it in here?
So that's, I don't know if we can, we should perhaps discuss it for the next time, but I just wanted to acknowledge that it was an oversight in our looking at interest and availability, so.
Okay. We'll get that, we'll make sure that we get that on.
Okay.
Okay. Would anybody like to speak on any of these appointments? Hearing none?
I'll move that we vote on this item.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and thank you for your service to our town.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next up, we have number five. This is a first select persons. Economic Development Commission, reappointment actually, of Kevin Lesko. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Any public comment? Can I have a motion?
We don't need to. It's for information purposes.
Oh, we don't? Oh, okay, all right. And number six is...
Moved.
Moved. And we are down to item C2, the appointment of Craig Van Steenberger.
Skip B.
Oh, I'm sorry. Highlighted. Okay. Board of Finance, Ed Bateson, to be, to fill the vacancy of Thomas Flynn, who was elected to the Board of Selectmen on November 5th.
I'll make the motion.
And I will second it, as long as I can say nice things about Mr. Bateson.
Absolutely.
Is now that time?
Absolutely.
Well, I just, I've, I had the privilege of serving with Mr. Bateson on the RTM, and he has offered sound counsel to me in the very short time that I have been in politics, but have always appreciated your thoughtful guidance, and I think you'll do very well on the Board of Finance, and good luck, and happy to be able to motion you in.
Thank you, Nancy.
I would, as the one that he is replacing on the Board of Finance, I have grave misgivings. No, I'm kidding. I actually think this is a step up in representation on the Board of Finance. I think Ed will do a phenomenal job, given his background on the RTM, as well as on this body, and I want to thank him for his continued dedication and service, and I'm very proud that he would be fulfilling that term on the Board of Finance, and I wish him the best of luck. I think that's a great body, and you'll serve it well going forward, so thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
And I would like to echo those comments. You have served our town in so many different capacities and with honor and integrity, and I really admire that you're stepping up to, to serve on the Board of Finance, which I would say is not as much fun as the RTM. But, and a lot...
I beg to differ.
A lot more hours. But thank you so much for stepping up to do that, and we look forward to serving with you.
Thank you.
Is there any comments from the public? Hearing none? We have a motion? We already have it?
Yeah.
On the table, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. Thank you.
I'll see you in January.
I think he's going to be sworn in.
Hey, Ed? Ed, do you need to be sworn in?
Yes, he does.
Yeah. Do you want to do that now, or how was it?
Betsy.
I don't know what the other...
He's got to go see Betsy.
Well, Betsy can do it, or...
Gotcha. Okay, very good.
Brenda can do it as well.
All right, Ed. Oh, that's cute. Okay, so item number C2, the appointment of Craig Van Steenberger, who's coming off of the Fire Commission and is, is going to, has stepped up to serve on the Ethics Commission, which we don't currently have enough members to actually hold meetings. So he is offered to do that, and so he's unable to be here this evening, but does anyone have any questions?
Will I make a motion that we put this before us?
Okay.
And I'll second it with a comment, if I...
Sure, absolutely.
That I had a chance to speak to, and I'm sorry if I'm badging, badgering your name, Mr. Van Steenbergen, Bergen, and we had a great conversation, and his reputation, his good reputation precedes him, and so I was, I was thrilled to be able to support that nomination and was glad we had the opportunity to speak earlier today, so.
Yeah, he's great. He's an Eagle Scout. He has trained and brought forth quite a few Eagle Scouts, and he is a very good, solid person, and I think he'll be a wonderful addition to the Ethics Commission.
So I've had the opportunity to work with Craig on and off over the last 14 years or so. He headed up some building committees for us. He is, as my colleague said, his reputation precedes him. He's quite a good individual, very dedicated to the town, does a lot of good things, and he also works at Yankee Stadium, so that's fascinating. He's been doing that for 20 some odd or 30 some odd years, not to date him, but he's a fascinating person, and I think he'll do wonderful work for us on the, on the Ethics Commission.
All right. Can I get a motion?
Aye.
To approve?
To, yeah, he's before us, so we can call for a vote.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And we come to E, Fire Commission, the appointment of Rob Sinto to fill the vacancy of Cran, Craig Van Steenbergen, Bergen, for the term of 2, 11, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it with additional comments, to say that I also had the chance to speak to Mr. Sinto today. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your service, and thank you for agreeing to serve again in, in a different capacity, and I was really pleased that you took the time today and were thoughtful in your, in your responses to me, and I look forward to supporting you here today and working with you moving forward.
Any comments?
I've gotten to know Rob a bit over the last few years. I'm proud to support him for this position. I think his background will be of great benefit to the Fire Commission.
Thank you, and I just would like to say too, thank you, Rob, for stepping up to serve, and we look forward to having you serve us on the Fire Commission, and Godspeed. We have a motion.
Motion to approve this?
Second, yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Sinto. Thank you for coming, by the way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Notice how quickly they leave, right after... Not gripping television, I would imagine.
Next up, we have item number F, Police Commission, the appointment of Kevin Kylie to fill the vacancy of Susan Barrett, whose term expired, and can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And I will second it.
So I will, if it's okay, Madam for Select Woman. Kevin Kylie preceded me as Chairman of the Board of Finance. I've worked with Kevin and known Kevin for 14 years. Much like Mr. Bateson, Kevin's been a dedicated public servant, and I think his background on the RTM, the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen will serve him and have prepared him well to be on the Police Commission, so I, I plan on supporting and approving this appointment.
Ditto.
Same, same. Kevin has also been, Mr. Kylie has been a great support, somewhat of a mentor to me in these last few years, and I'm proud to be able to support his, his appointment, and I think he'll do a great job. I think he's able to work in a bipartisan way. He's thoughtful, and I think he'll bring, he'll be a great asset to, to the Board, to the Commission, to the Police Commission.
And just for a note, that Mr. Kylie sent me a message today that he is in Florida for work, and he was unable to attend, or he would have. I actually have no Mr. Kylie, back, going back to the two high school fighting days. So he was a one high schooler until I convinced him to be a two high schooler, and so, and that's when we've known each other quite a long time, and I think he'll be very good on the Police Commission, and I look forward to supporting him.
It's, it's already before us.
Yep, yep. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And I think we just mentioned the resignation, right? We don't have to do anything about that.
Do I have to officially be on the water pollution?
Oh, yes, yes, you do. So, item K. Sorry about that, Nancy. Water pollution, I know you're dying to get on that.
I'm excited.
Water Pollution Control Authority. Per our charter, it requires that we have a Selectman serve on this, as it has, also requires me to serve on the Police and Fire Retirement Board, and Select Woman Nancy Lefkowitz is graciously agreed to serve, and I think that's lovely, so.
Mr. Sinto said it's a good time.
He lied.
There is so much fun.
I'll make the motion, and I think, Madam for Select Woman, you should probably second it.
I would second, absolutely.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, and thank you. You're going to have some fun. What night did that meet? You're going to have fun nights, the Water Pollution Control Authority. And what else do we have? Item number eight, we have the Fairfield Fire Department. Kieran, Kieran is here.
Read that, just as an reminder.
Oh, the resignation? Do we have to read the resignation?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so I'm sorry. Item number seven, resignations, Fair TV Commission, Catherine Braun, who was elected to serve on the Town Planning and Zoning. Her resignation date was November 25th, 2019. We don't have to vote on it, do we? Okay.
If we vote no, can she not resign?
Nope, she can't. She has to do both. We next have a fire...
Just a housekeeping question, I believe, just for the record, and forgive me if I have this wrong, Mr. Sinto needs to formally resign from water pollution.
He actually, he did it.
Okay, so...
He sent an email to Betty Brown.
Okay.
Yesterday.
So that's also FYI, so it's done, and it's on the record?
Yep.
Great.
Item number eight is Fairfield Fire Department, Karen Dunn, Emergency Management Director. This is a state statute requirement when there's a new administration?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes, because of the change of administration, we have to authorize you as Select, for Select Woman, to sign for and accept federal funds.
And we'll take them.
Please, please do.
So is this a blanket authorization?
Yes, it is, and it's for mainly anything in the Homeland Security, which is, which is the money that we get based on population each year.
Right.
As long as we keep, continue to perform our emergency management duties, which we do.
Is this separate from the, when we have to approve...
Those specific things like...
Accepting funds?
Yes, assistance for fire, firefighters' grants, they're separate, and so are the Port Security Grants, which are among the, in front of the bodies.
I guess I'm missing something. So this is a blanket approval of...
For specific Homeland Security funds.
That, now, do these specific funds then go before the other town bodies, or the...
No, these don't have to. These come, these come in, yeah, because there's no, on these funds, there's no, you know, additional payment...
Matching spend.
Yeah, matching, in kind, or any...
What's the number that we typically get?
Typically, you get around $30,000, a little over $30,000. It's based on 50 cents per person.
$30,000 a year?
$30,000 a year.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You have any questions, Nancy?
No.
My apologies for monopolizing you.
Thank you very much.
So I have to read this, right? Okay, so I'm going to read this into the record. Resolve that the Town of Fairfield and its Board of Selectmen and Representative Town Meeting may enter in, into, with, and deliver to the State of, State Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate, and further resolve that Brenda L. Cupchik, for Select Woman of the Town of Fairfield, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Town of Fairfield, its Board of Selectmen, and the Fairfield Representative Town Meeting, to do and perform all acts and things which she deems to be necessary or appropriate, to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents. Do I have, can someone make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is number nine, the Unisden Burr Chapter DAR. This also requires probate court of Fairfield approval.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I think we need to...
It's my absolute pleasure to be here this evening, and I'm trying to figure out what to call you, the Board, I think it's the Board of Select Women and Selectmen Flynn.
Our select people.
It's the two roses and one thorn, is what it is.
I really, yeah, but anyway, thank you. I'm Kate Maxim. I'm, I am the judge of probate, but I'm not here in that capacity. I'm actually here in the capacity on behalf of the Unisden Burr Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. And there, I thought I might give you a little bit of education, since it's probably your first time where we've come before you three, as is required by our statutes, to remove a headstone from our ancient burial grounds. Now, I didn't send this through, I think you all have our petition before you?
I think it was in that package.
These are our statutes, should anybody want to read them, as to what, how we get to why I'm here tonight.
Okay.
Love to hear this. Thank you.
No, we don't have that.
We don't have a petition?
I don't have this.
Oh, gosh, I sense it, all right. Then I'm going to give one. Do you have one? There's pictures, that's why I want you to have it.
Oh, that's neat. Oh, that is?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll send that up to Jen, I'm so sorry.
It's not your, no, I'm sure it's...
There's a few, there's a few pictures of it. So our statutes require, we have, we have a headstone of Reverend Elliot in the ancient burial ground, in the old burial ground, which is right up here on Beet Road.
I love that.
It's an, it's an awful repair, and there's a few pictures in that petition. What our statutes require is that before that headstone can be removed, and it has to be removed to be repaired, the, the petitioner, in this case, it's, it's actually Gene Stevens, he's the registrar of the Daughters of the Unisden Burr Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, we have to go to the authorities in our town, and in Fairfield, Parks and Rec Commission are in charge of our ancient cemeteries, our old cemeteries. So we went to their meeting last month, and that, and they approved the removal of it. We've also appointed Betty Oldewald, who is also a longtime member of many boards and commissions in Fairfield, but a member of the DAR. She is acting as a guardian at lineum for the heirs of Reverend Elliot, because we're supposed to seek them out. And I know that Mrs. Stevens did do some research. We couldn't find any direct heir. So Betty is acting to allow that headstone to be removed, and then, of course, repaired and replaced. So that's why we're here tonight, because actually, we're here to ask your permission to allow yet another petition to go before the probate court, and the probate court then will give the final, the final approval to have that headstone removed and repaired. So attached to that, to the petition, is a proposal from Artista, I think it's Artista Studios, and they do ancient monument work, and they have done several of ours. They're not the fastest-moving group, but they do have to take these headstones out. They have to stay out of the ground, out of the weather for a year, and I'll have Mrs. Stevens speak a little bit more to that. This particular individual, whose headstone is, we're seeking to have removed and repaired, is a very, very interesting man, and I'd like Betty, if you don't mind, to come up, tell you a little bit about how important in our history Reverend Elliot is. Thanks, Betty.
Do I have to give my address? No. So the Reverend Elliot, he wasn't a politician, he wasn't a military hero, he was the religious leader of this town. And he comes by being a congregational minister, honestly, because his dad was the pastor at the North Church in Boston, and you'll remember, that's where the lanterns were hung for Paul Revere. So he came by his political affiliations as being a patriot, and when he got to this town in 1773, some little bit too much of a rebel, but he survived, and he performed the marriage ceremony in Burr Mansion of John Hancock with Dorothy Quincy. I think that's an often-forgotten moment in Fairfield history, but when the British were going to attack Lexington and Concord, Hancock and Adams were having a meeting, and Dorothy Quincy was there with Hancock's aunt, and they were planning their wedding. So when the British came, they had to flee. They stopped here in Fairfield, because John Hancock knew the Burr's, left his aunt and his fiancee, and went on to Philadelphia. Then came our friend Aaron Burr, who was a bit of a romancer, and Aunt Lydia got a little nervous and said to her nephew, hurry home, because you need to marry this lady. So he did, and Elliot performed the ceremony here. There was no way they could get back to Boston, which was their true home at that point. So he says in 1778 that we are Fairfield, the center of danger. Mary Silliman, her husband, and all the troops have not gone so much as to the house of God without carrying their arms. So you can see how tense the things are. You can't imagine people bringing their arms into church, but they were in those days. So when the British invaded here in July of 1779, they offered refuge to those who would give proof of penitence and voluntary submission, which the town refused. That meant that everybody that wouldn't sign that house, that we were here in the center of town, was burned when they fled. He says in a letter to his father, "I sit down to write to you of some account of the sad and awful scene which has been exhibited in this once pleasant and delightful town. Now alas, a heap of ruins, a sad spectacle of desolation and woe. Our friend Joseph Bartram was shot through the breast, and old Mr. Solomon Sturgis, an Irish servant of Mr. Penfield and a Negro man belonging to Mr. Lewis, were put to death by bayonet." So, forty of the enemy were killed, eight were wounded, eight to ten Americans were killed, and he most ardently wishes for peace and tranquility. Now, at the time of the burning, he had to go after his home was burned, he went to live in a tavern with his wife and daughters. Tavern isn't exactly the place where you raise your children, so he sent his daughters away, he had a son born there, and soon the town was able to rebuild and give him a small house to live in, and they had to rebuild the church. The church was the town hall as well, so you have to have a town hall as well as having your church. The town realized, the people in the town, that they couldn't really pay him a salary. There was no money, and if there was any money, they were trying to rebuild their own houses. So they advised him to go someplace else and get a church that could support him. And he said that, at that time, "I've been with you in your prosperity, and I'll stay by you in your adversity." So his tombstone is in the old burial ground, I think he's worthy of being repaired. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a few more minutes, if I may ask, Mrs. Stevens to come up, she has a little bit more background in exactly what has to happen to this particular headstone. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have really too much to add to Betty's wonderful history of Reverend Elliot, except that when I was thinking about him today, there's something that he did that I think we think of modern pastors doing, and that is, that Sunday after the burning of the town, he actually held a service right across Beach Road at the Nathan Buckley House, one of the ones that survived the burning, and, you know, we think of that today as pastors after a tragedy, even if the church itself is gone, you know, having some kind of a service to comfort their flock. So in terms of his tombstone, I think it's probably fair to say that it's in the worst condition of any in the old burial ground, and it, I know that Jim Brea, who is the restorer with Artista, is slow, he has a lot of work, there are not too many companies that do this kind of work, but the repair of an old stone is just by nature a slow process, so it has to come out of the ground and really dry out in his studios for, could be up to a whole year before any, any work can be done on the areas of the tombstone.
Sure.
Saw the pictures, all that flaking and, and whatnot, so that goes slow, too. They are working on, actually, the reason for my petition is because I was, I was interested in our chapter's namesakes tombstone, Eunice Denny Burr, and I wanted to see the condition of her stone, and Jim is also working on that, it is also that type of brown stone, and to repair those flaked areas requires like layering composite material on, but after each layer, then each one has to dry out before you put another layer on top, so it's very time consuming. And, but as, as Betty said, I think Reverend Elliot is worthy of the time, worthy of our interest and the expense that it would be to, to repair the stone.
So what is, what is success? Like, what does the stone look like when it's done? It's not to be-
Right, that I, that I can't tell you. If it were, if it were made of marble, Mr. Brea did some repair on two stones in Westport at their, at the Greens Farms Old Burial Ground. I retired from Staples a year ago, last June, and I spearheaded the repair of Horace Staples and his wife's stone. Now, they were made of marble, and those stones look beautiful today, but this old sandstone-
Right.
Is different, so it's, I would guess it's not going to look like it did originally, but that the degradation of it would be halted.
Right. And how much does it cost, and who's paying for that? I'm not, I'm not, yeah.
That's mine. And I knew that our former chairman of the Board of Finance would ask that question, so I prepared to answer it. So we started this process in about June, and at that time, our Department of Public Works always has money set aside-
Right.
To do repairs. I approached Joe Michelangelo and Scott Bartlett to see if they would approve the, I think the estimate's about $4,000 for this particular one, and then there was a smaller one, which we don't need a permission from your, the Board of Selectwomen and Men, which you can repair in the cemetery. They approved it, but I, I waited, and I then went back to Brian Carey, when he was appointed interim, and I asked him to see if the approval had gone through. He ratified it and re-refereed it, so there's a purchase order waiting, their money has been set aside by the town. So in this particular case, for this particular cemetery, it's the town that's gonna be paying for it.
So I absolutely love history, I love the history of our town, I've read a lot of the history of our town, my point being, do we have a, is somebody in charge of an overall plan to maintain these, or is this catches, is catch can?
This is somewhat catches, catch can, there are some of the headstones in the old burial ground where people have raised money to restore and repair. I think Captain Smedley, is it Captain Smedley, in one in particular, he has a lot of followers. But by and large, most of these repairs have been done through our public works budget over the years.
And do they do, does it happen-
And donations, I'm sorry.
Is it like one a year, one every few years?
Well, we haven't been before this commission for about three years to remove any headstones. Now, that, this is a whole different story from what's going on at the Greenfields Hill Cemetery, which is private, and those are all being repaired by this wonderful James Taylor, is it? Yeah, Taylor, yeah, sorry, I'm getting confused with my youth. He does them right in the cemetery, and-
Right, and not to, and forgive me, I know, you know-
Sorry, I don't mean to, yeah.
No, but the, does the historic commission come into play with this at all?
The historic commission generally does not, but the History Museum is usually very involved.
And they're involved in this one?
And they are not in this, in this particular, and they did not bring this to our attention, the DAR members who maintain the graves of the Revolutionary War soldiers did, but several of the others, over the years, have come through the History Museum. So there is sometimes an interplay, it is really catches, catch can, absolutely, and I would agree that something a little bit more, you know-
It's just so much the history of our town.
It makes sense, yeah, 'cause if you walk in there, every time you turn around, there's another gravestone on the ground. It's, you know, there are probably plenty more that could be righted and repaired, it's just a matter of time and money.
I just love that they're a group of citizens who are so, it's so heartwarming, that they're dedicated to this cause, and I too, I'm a student of history, and we can't understand where we're going if we don't know where we've been, and I think this is such a great opportunity to work with History Museum and the schools, to really educate the kids about the kinds of incredible people and our history here, it's really fascinating to learn.
And our History Museum does, they're, they're very, very good about including that. Now, in that petition that I handed you, and I do apologize that there was one for all of you, you can see Mr., if, can I just grab it back for a second? Not to pre-labor this, but he's a fairly exciting man.
Here is one, it's in our-
We have the, what is written on his headstone and Selectman Flynn, I think that what may end up happening is, we won't get the exact etching on the headstone, but there may have to be a plaque with it, but it will be replicated. But he's, in the note at the bottom, it says, "He was a ripe scholar, a prudent, faithful, and beloved pastor." You know, that's pretty nice to have said about you afterwards, this many years later. But any other questions that I can answer, hope to answer?
No? Well, thank you for all your volunteer efforts and the work that you do.
Thank you for your kind consideration.
And just to make you feel better, the information was in our packet.
I'm sorry.
It's here.
So I'm gonna read the most, the item is, "To hear and consider an act upon a request from the Register of the Eunice Denny Burr Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution of the town of Fairfield for the Board of Selectmen, acting as the burial ground authority for the ancient burial grounds known as the Old Burial Ground situated on Beach Road, for permission to petition the Honorable Probate Court of Fairfield for authority to remove, repair, restore, reset that certain brown stone grave marker of Reverend Andrew Elliot in accordance with the repair details as set forth in the attached estimate from Artista Studios and Monument Works dated July 13, 2019." Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you for taking the time. Item number 10, "To consider an act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of eleven, is it $11,870.36?"
So apparently, I have reviewed the tax refund as recommended by the tax collector. I did have a question, and I, is that-
Can I see the book?
You wanna make a motion first, and then we'll have it on?
Is the book part of it, or is this?
This is just the folder.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
What, she wants to look at it while you're talking or not?
Oh, do you, do you know which one to ask?
Well, I just, I looked through it and reviewed it, and the number is correct in the amount of $11,870.36. Is there any other glaring, I didn't see it, it just says errors in, they're mostly overpaid due to adjustment and errors in payment, is there any other?
Yeah, so I can clarify that, so, and I was asked to attend tonight, but you're gonna see this item basically on every meeting, pretty much, because there's often times where, there's situations where people pay their taxes, and then a change occurs, and then the money is no longer the property of the town, and per state statute, 12-129, refund excess payments, it requires that it goes through the Board of Selectmen before the money is given back, so it's more or less just a procedural, procedural matter. It'll often be in the range of, say, $11,000. The highest we've ever had was, say, like $2 million, but that was during the federal tax plan, when people had paid, even though they escrowed, and then the escrow company still paid because of the timing of it. But, yeah, so if you look at the work here, and I'm just going down the list, if I look at Motor, 2018 Motor Vehicle, Abigail A. Campos, overpaid in error, that would be simply because we're one of the few towns in the state where motor vehicle taxes are due in two installments, and what happens is people pay their first installment in July, they forget that they paid their first installment, because we only sent, we send one bill in July with both installments, they pay that first installment, they look at their bill in January, and they pay the entire bill instead of the one second installment, and if they pay it on, say, January 31st, because we're bound by state statute, our only recourse is, we force the payment through, because we don't want to charge them interest, and then they apply for a refund, because they paid the first installment, then the full year, so they overpaid, and we don't have enough time to contact them and, contact them and say, hey, come back with a new check for the lesser amount. So that's the overpaid in error. The overpaid due to adjustment, the very next one, under 18 Motor Vehicle, which is Carpio Rodriguez, first name Gladys, that's the most common one, that's because motor vehicle taxes are in arrears, meaning they're due July 1, 2019, the most recent tax due date, but it's based on the previous October 1, 2018. So people move out of town, they junk vehicles, a vehicle gets into an accident, they sell a vehicle, so they go to the assessor, they prove that they got rid of that vehicle, the assessor does a certificate of correction, an adjustment, which reduces the bill, but it doesn't mean that that has to be done before it's paid, they can, they can do that adjustment even after they've paid, so they could pay the full year in July, they could come in in October, get an adjustment, that generates a credit, and then we're required to give the refund.
So 10,000 approximately, times 12? 12 months, 10,000, more?
Yeah, I mean, the number is gonna fluctuate, it will fluctuate, these are the typical adjustments, sometimes there will be court stipulations where the assessor, a big corporation has appealed their assessment, and they may have won the appeal, or it may have been determined through court that they're entitled to some type of settlement, so there could be a refund in the six figures.
Right.
You know, that's not common, you're not gonna see that every single week.
And it's accounted for in your budgets, and it's not-
Yeah.
This is, okay.
But this is something that you'll see pretty much every single meeting.
Okay.
We make it easy on you in that, what we do is, there could be, for example, on this one, what is there, like about 20 refunds or more? The law just requires that it's approved through the Board of Selectmen, but we just have you sign the cover sheet, which is the second page of the cover sheet, we don't make you sign every single refund, so it's, it's not a tedious process.
All three of us have to sign it, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you want to sign it right now?
Yeah, if, if going forward, once it passes, in, the Finance Department has requested that it get, just the cover sheet signed.
I think we should approve it first.
Or after approval, and then you just sign it.
Right.
Yep.
I make a motion, and we approve the tax refunds?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's disappointing to see my name's not on here.
He's not getting money back.
I'm not getting money back, I'm not, you know. Yeah, Matthew Moore, exactly, former Board of Finance humor.
Okay, so we have to put these, Mr. Flynn?
You wanna put those back in?
We have to put these back in.
Okay.
Okay. Item number 11, "To hear and consider an act upon any other business which shall properly come before this."
Can I have one item just for discussion?
Sure.
Tonight, we came across another, an item from the Department of Public Works related to the old burial grounds and the payment of that. In the past couple of months, this has been one of several items that has come to my attention, even when I was on the Board of Finance, in that vein, it was really related to firehouses and the upkeep of firehouses. I think during the budget process, we need, just, we need a bit more detail related to where these funds are going, because we're coming across a bunch of instances where it's really the phrase is catches, is catch can, and it's, you know, hey, we repair the firehouses or deal with the maintenance issues at the firehouse when we have the money available, or we do the burial ground fixes when we have the money available, as opposed to a plan put together to actually manage those assets, and I will call out, you know, the Board of Education has very strong plans as relates to the maintenance of their buildings, whether it be roofs, whether it be furnaces, whether it be the building envelopes, et cetera, and I'd like to see the town develop similar plans as it relates to town-managed buildings, and certainly to understand a bit better what these catches, is catch can, items are in the DPW budget, just so that we can manage them appropriately. It's our history, and once it's gone, it's gone, and I think a more proactive approach on that is probably warranted, so that, that would be my other business as we head into the budget process, and I'm happy to work with the Finance Department on that, should it please the Board. So, thank you.
I'd just like to say that since the DAR does do a lot of cleaning at all East Cemetery and Old Burial Ground, puts all the fires out in the war, all the veterans of the revolution, and many of the veterans from the war of 1812 that are also buried in the cemeteries, and as somebody who's worked with Joe Franco maybe the last six years, as being this family member, I researched the family and trying to make that person come alive and to recognize the little girl, so I think- to make that person come alive and to recognize the difficulty. So I think the DIO would be happy, if your format group will be representative, would be happy.
Thank you. I, I don't know, maybe they take that under, we take that under advisement. I'm just looking at the dollars of it right now and saying, yeah, thank you. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts?
No, just, I think, to echo what you're saying in terms of looking at things holistically, I think it's going to be really important moving forward in this next phase, and especially as we go into budget season.
Right.
All right. Well, that was a good first meeting, everybody.
Well done. Well done.
So can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll do that one.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.